I would like to call to order the June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Colrain Township Zoning Commission. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Welcome to those in attendance, township staff and my fellow commissioners. Just as a friendly reminder for everyone present tonight, please silence your devices at this time. Mr. Peters, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bachman?
Here.
Mr. Gary? Ms. McMullen?
Here.
Mr. Westfall?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
And can we please see our alternative, please?
Do we have any alternatives in the audience? Mr. Hauser?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, just running down the agenda, no presentation of minutes. And for public address, next we would like to welcome members of the public to address the zoning commission with any items on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Okay. Seeing none, we will move forward. We have no final development plans tonight, no public hearings, no informal concept reviews, no old business or new business, correct?
We have new business.
We have the administrative.
Okay, administrative.
Okay. So that brings us to the administrative report.
Great. So the way that I wanted to frame this is more of a discussion and the questions that you guys have. I did put up some discussion topics for each article. I think that there's a lot to unpack in these articles. These are definitely the meat of the zoning resolution. One and two kind of set it up. Three and four are the zoning resolution. Five, six, seven kind of close it out. So there's a lot that's changed. There's a lot, some, there's a lot that stayed the same frankly. But anything that popped out, anyone that they have questions on, want to know where we came from, where the idea was drafted from. A few things that I'll mention for Article Three. The master use and density intensity plan, we may call it the master use plan. This is a plan instead of a change of use, someone would have to keep on file. We've had an issue where we don't know the way that a property is being used because it will go vacant for a couple of years or people won't come in and file for a change of use. So understanding how a property is being used is important to understanding if the next use is approvable or not, especially for other changes that we're making such as parking. We need to really understand what every single parcel will be used for. So the master plan will be stored on file by the zoning administrator and it will be referenced for future use changes. Accessory dwelling units is a big change. This would be the ability to turn a piece of property into a dwelling unit that wasn't really built that way. So you could do a conversion over garage potentially. We can talk a little more about that if people have questions. Halfway houses has been ongoing. Single and two-unit zone, I think might be one of the more controversial ones. Instead of, most of the zones right now are single family only. In R six, you can have up to four units. You can't have any in R one through R five. And in the vast majority of parcels moving forward, two units will be allowed. One way to look at that is that it will help with affordable housing. Another way to look at that is that it will mean that anybody can do a duplex in any of those zones moving forward. The really rural areas will still be single family only. But the vast majority of single families right now will be able to have a duplex built next door. And then billboards, we changed a little bit. The not being, billboard companies will not be allowed to put up electronic billboards. They are right now, but they have not done it yet. But moving forward, we are going to limit the use of billboards if approved by the board to being cardboard not illuminated at all. So with that, I'd like to open the floor for discussion topics about Article Three. Things in Article Four, parking and signage and design standards, we'll address after we're done with Article Three.
So one, I guess I really didn't understand that the duplexes would be permitted in single-family neighborhoods, which is a, which is a change, significant change. And can you kind of talk through what the sense of why you're suggesting that or recommending that?
Yeah. That is a current planning best practice. And every university pretty much agrees that it will help with affordable housing and that there's no reason, if you look at a house on a single lot with a very small setback, how come you couldn't put those two houses together? The intensity is not really there. You'd be eliminating a ten-foot setback on each side. That would be the plus side for it. I think it would be great for Colrain because it could lead to more people and more density, which makes areas more walkable. That's something that is often brought up. If you look at the way it's framed in this proposal in our use table, two-family homes are going to be permitted by right. So they wouldn't have any conditions, they wouldn't have to meet any standards. Anybody could literally take an open lot on Menominee or wherever and build a duplex. There would be pressure for them to build a good duplex because you want to make the most money for your dollar, obviously. But anywhere in those zones where a single family is allowed, a two-family would be allowed. Now that's different from a three-family, a four-family. But basically to answer your question in a short answer, the, many people feel as though the difference between a single family and a two-family, the intensity between those is not great.
You mentioned the issue of affordable housing. Is that an issue in Colrain?
I would say affordable housing is an issue across the United States. I think Ohio is dealing with it a little better than some places. If you go to some coastal places, you, almost nobody can afford to live there, obviously we know that. But in Colrain, we have an opportunity to house people and bring new people to the community, new lifeblood to the community, that we can't currently do with the sprawl that we have. If anyone doesn't know what sprawl is, it's basically the fact that we've created a system where nothing is walkable, where people live so far away, where you can live here and your neighbor can live here, but you have to drive like this to get to your neighbor's house. So create, increasing density will eventually alleviate some of those problems.
That's, that's a significant change. That is a significant modification in, in land use strategy for a, I would call suburban, a suburban township.
I totally agree.
And for me, I, I have a hard time with the duplex. Simply because, as you mentioned, you know, I live on Menominee and I know that's why you mentioned Menominee. Empty lot in Northbrook, you have one to two cars that are able to park. Everybody else is on the street, so add in a duplex and to that area is double the cars, double the lack of parking that would be available. I don't think in our existing neighborhoods, we can really accommodate having the double affordable housing.
Yeah.
Idea.
Since this is a strange meeting where it's more dialogue centered, I want to just say a caveat that Mr. Miller and I don't necessarily, we didn't necessarily come up with all of these ideas. We're not necessarily a hundred percent advocating all these ideas. We worked with KZF and ZoneCo consultants and there's other voices in the township. So if there is something, I can give you the pros and the cons to it, but that doesn't necessarily mean that I don't agree with you. Because frankly, in a lot of ways, I do.
Ultimately, it's going to be a decision that you'll make as a zoning commission.
Right.
You have editorial privileges.
Unless they, unless they are meeting the code and they can build by right.
Well, no, what I'm saying is on the, on the draft that's in front of you is by definition a draft. And so at some point, and we reviewed Article One and Two, this is Three and Four, we'll do Five, Six and Seven in the near future. Once we get all of this hammered out to a point where we feel like we're ready for you to take a final, take a vote on this, you could make recommendations to make changes. And those would then go to the board trustees for them to consider. But you, you really are the front line on this zoning code and, and that's why we, we have confidence. Smart people, we're glad you're there, thank you for your time. Feel free totally to, to provide input on this because that's, that's really what this is about. And you know what, I'm really not comfortable with doing duplexes in, in traditionally single-family residential neighborhoods. Then, okay, then let's take that back to the drawing board and see if there's something else.
Or an existing neighborhood, you know, we have on Houston, there's the two-family duplexes that are going in.
Correct.
That were designed and built for that area.
I add to what Mr. Miller said real quick. You're the first citizens of Colrain to hear this at all. So if you guys decide we strike something, we're striking it. So you don't have to wait and vote and make amendments. If there's something in here you don't like, tell us and we will make the changes to take to the trustees. That's what we're here for.
So we could really, with the, with the duplex, we could actually require them to have off-street parking.
Yes.
For two vehicles or?
That's exactly right. If you wanted to say, you know what, let's go ahead and allow single and two in traditionally single-family neighborhoods. But you have to provide off-street parking. I mean, I've seen a number of duplexes that do have two driveways. You know, they have garage on each side or, or you know, something that provides that. So it's, I, some houses have, you know, right now, the single families.
Problem is, is then when you have the duplex one over instead of side-by-side, that's where you're going to have, on a small lot.
Correct.
That's where you're going to have a.
Northbrook would be difficult.
Right.
You know, they're just smaller lots.
And they still have to meet the site development standards of the zone for a single family. So they still have to be back thirty-five, forty feet depending on what zone they're in. It still can only have to be at least nine hundred square feet for the building or for each side. So it's not like you could go build a shack, put up a manufactured building and put a wall in the middle and call it a duplex. You still have to meet the site development standards for it.
But the, drawing board's open.
So one, one, as I'm kind of trying to get my arms around it, how many, would it be all the residential districts you're, that this is written for right now? All our districts?
Get you a map.
Yeah, a map would be even better.
So to answer your question, no, it would not be the very rural, rural estate area?
A-one?
Yeah. It wouldn't be that, it would be pretty much everything else. So let me get you that map.
If I remember right, it was like the pink blob to the west, which was basically Colrain Avenue West.
So there's a legend on there? The very top one on the legend, the rural estate, will not allow the single two families?
Would not, the pink would not. But the dark, okay.
Yeah. It would be the single and two-family STR. Yeah. It would be M U R, N B M. Those would allow the single and two families by right. All they have to do is meet the site development standards of a single-family home. And I put a packet in each of your seats and they have the zones listed on there. The, by the way, the second and third page are the site development standards if you'd like to reference those. And the rest of the pages are the use tables. I thought it would be handy to have a printout of that. The way that they printed that in the zoning resolution, taking up eighty-four pages for the use table, isn't not how the final copy is going to be.
Thank you, that was actually one of my first comments I made in one of our first meetings when we received this is repetition. So I'm not a fan of bringing duplexes into an existing neighborhood. But I'm not the decision maker. Is it something that you would prefer if we make a motion, vote on, or is this just informal?
No, this is an informal discussion.
We're not voting on anything tonight.
If I hear the majority of you, if I hear all you don't like it, you know, you live here, I don't. If I hear a couple of you, maybe we'll chat about it with other township officials and the trustees and then you can vote at the end based upon how strongly you feel about it. So we're just trying to feel the waters out on.
I, I guess where I'm at is I think it's pretty significant policy change for a suburban township. I understand affordability. With that though comes, are these all now rentals? And we have, we now made some, some issues with regard to a more rental community than homeownership. Homeownership, so that's an issue that I'm struggling with in my own, try to, try to come to grips with it. So right where I'm at, I think I'm with Lori in terms of I have some, some concerns that I would probably say, no, that's probably not appropriate.
Okay.
Given what I've heard so far. I think I am too. Especially in the subdivisions that are established, if there's one lot that has a duplex on it, it stands out like a sore thumb. And if a new existing subdivision is put somewhere in that area, I don't see a problem with it. But for the existing ones like Northbrook is, it would, it would stand out like a sore thumb. Well, and you, and the, the draft code that you, you presented to us, and I might be moving forward in Section Four, but somewhere I believe in the overlay for significant slopes, so hillsides, there's a whole provision in there about increased density to save those hillsides and to, and to keep those sensitive areas not developed. So there, maybe duplexes and a, and a portion of the, of the proposal or proportion of development make a lot of sense to leave a lot of green space. But then it's more of a planned.
Right.
Item that everyone understands and, and it's, and it's starting from page one, if you will. But this, this is what we want versus kind of infill housing.
Yeah.
Within a suburban market.
That's right, and I'm, I'm selfish, so you know, I'm thinking of Northbrook. But say you jump to, goes back to the Royal Heights neighborhood, who, they have single-car driveways and very small lots. Unless it's a shotgun-style house that's going in or you're doing two, there's zero chance of having a comfortable living there and zero chance that there is adequate parking on their lot. And there's zero parking available. I don't know if you've driven down those streets, but you can't even pull over to let the car go by, so it's just not feasible.
It is something that a lot of big cities are doing to try to, because they hear a lot of complaints about four-wheel housing. We're more suburban. Mr. Wilson, you have any thoughts?
I don't have any strong feelings on it, but I, I'm convinced by the arguments here, so.
So the way we'll move forward is you have two options. Either we can come up with a list of conditions that would allow for duplexes in the future. We can work with KZF on that or we can tell KZF and ZoneCo that the zoning commission does not like the idea and that we're going to take it out of the resolution.
I'm comfortable with conditions, you know, it, there are circumstances where it's feasible, but just not as an, an open.
By right.
Yep, by right.
And I guess I'm, I'm of the opinion, just take it out. That's, that's all my opinion.
And I'm fine with taking it out too, I should say. I was trying to be a little lenient.
Again, I would, I would say, you know, in a new subdivision would be fine, but other than, other than that, you know, most of these areas are, are established. So.
All right.
And I just want to.
I agree with that.
Okay.
But I really appreciate you bringing that change, those policy changes to our attention, kind of highlighting them like you've done because frankly, I didn't catch it. The three hundred and nine pages, there's no way I caught it.
Just wait.
But that's, that's what we need is, is this is a change, here's why we're doing it, what do you guys think? And bouncing it off of us and you're getting the input, which makes a lot of sense.
We don't want to sneak anything in on you because you have to live here. I live sixty-five miles away.
Absolutely.
I want to, I want to make these changes that I think will be sustainable and great for Colrain Township, but not if it's something that the township doesn't want.
Sure.
So I think we're going to move to strike that.
The sneaky stuff we're not telling you about.
So we'll, we'll contact KZF ZoneCo about striking that.
Yep.
Okay, are you taking that seriously?
Yep.
Okay, great. All right.
And then my only other comment, and I have it on my phone, so I'm not texting, just so everybody knows. I really appreciated the clarity that was added to three-point, four-point, five-through-seven, which is just the vehicles parking in some of these car lots. Specifically, not the Colrain Avenue car lots, but there's little ones that you see scattered throughout our township that have these cars parked in the grass and, uh, grass that's four feet tall next to them, clearly not for sale.
Yeah.
But that seemed like it was cleaned up and I appreciated seeing that.
For the record, we, we are even now going through and adding and tweaking stuff a little bit, just to clarify some things. So I'm glad that you noticed things that are cleared up. I noticed a lot of things too, that I think that KZF and ZoneCo worked very hard on it, as did we, you know. I could tell you how many hours we put in this, but it was a lot. Does anyone have any other thoughts on Article Three?
I do not.
Okay. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to our next item of business. And that's Article Four. I believe that Article Four is the biggest part of the zoning resolution. Aside from the uses in Article Three, Article Four is kind of the standards of what we see around us. So there were significant changes to Article Four that are monumental. Dimensional standards changed a little bit. And in your packet in front of you, you have the site development standards. Nothing monumental in that. And then we get on to parking. So very similarly to single and two-family zones, another best practice in communities today is the elimination of parking minimums. And we have proposed that, although the two people sitting at this table weren't a strong proponent of the single duplex thing, we both do believe that eliminating minimum parking standards will be great for this township. And just to give you a couple of reasons, if you have a building, an old restaurant, and somebody wants to move in, remodel that restaurant, maybe build onto it, they can't because they need seventy-two parking spaces and they can't build into the parking lot, that building continues to rot. Minimum parkings are a cancer to economic development. And if we get rid of those, we'll have infill development in commercial zones that will bring more money and more people to the township. It also, it, it shows that we don't prioritize the automobile over everything else. So we can make more room for things like bikes and pedestrian walkways if we are not requiring people to have enough parking for Black Friday, which is frankly, the way that we have been doing it since nineteen ninety-five. So I want to hear people's thoughts on the minimum parking requirement being eliminated.
Would that requirement be appropriate or ripe for a Board of Zoning Appeals? So, so what I'm, what I'm getting at is there is remedy in the current code, is that correct or not correct?
There is remedy with you, you guys in the development plans where someone can have a reduced number of parking or the Board of Zoning Appeals if they develop by right. The remedy moving forward would be the master parking plan, which is referenced, where they kind of give what their idea for parking is. And basically, if it meets the standards of the resolution, great. If it doesn't, then we go to the board and we figure out what we can do to make sure there is enough parking.
My only concern is on some of the infill that, do you, do you, there, there's limited, there, there's a finite number of parking. There's an empty space, just to your point of economic development. My concern is it's a bar, it's a, it's a brewery, whatever, that now has a lot of parking spaces. And have we, have we disrupted now the, the existing commercial entities that are there? Don't know. I mean, that's, that's where the remedy to the Board of Zoning Appeals comes in.
And there is a recent example of that was Corin and Galbraith, that little restaurant that moved in, had to go to the BZA because they didn't have enough parking.
Yeah.
So they agreed with the business next door to share parking.
And those will still exist, shared parking agreements will exist. And I think it's been said a lot, a lot around the offices, the township offices, that if you're going to develop a site, you're likely going to do so in a way that is going to be profitable. And since David is in charge of development, do you have any thoughts on what eliminating minimum parking will do to development?
Well, I, I'm starting from that same perspective you just noted. If, if I am building out a new business and I want customers, I'm most likely going to look for ways that I can provide parking for them. I'm not going to say find it yourself because it's only going to take one visit when somebody can't find a parking space and they're going, they're not coming back. So to the degree that the free market helps fix that upfront, I think that's, that's a plus. And at the same time, I think when they approach us for zoning certificates and, uh, plan developments, I think those will be the times that we want to examine their master parking plan and try to come up with something that is workable for them together. And to ensure that there isn't a problem that's being created for their neighbors. Because that, that is certainly a problem that you can, that you can run into where you have too many customers that bleed over and they disrupt the, your neighbors next door, whether it's taking their parking spaces. I, I have a, a case right now that I've been dealing with that, uh, a strip mall next to an office. There is a shared parking agreement between the two. But there, there is a constant dispute right now that we've been working through together, fortunately. You know, it hasn't resulted in litigation yet. But those are the kind of issues that we'd like to discuss upfront as we're approving their projects so that we can ensure that there is less opportunity for that conflict.
So, so when I look at Stone Creek, you're absolutely right. There are so many parking spaces in front of Meyer that are absolutely never used. That's where the semi-trucks park, that's where we approve the car wash, so on and so on and so on. I get it, that makes a lot of sense. So a new development or a large, large development, I think eliminating the parking minimums make a lot of sense. Where I'm struggling is the case that you just mentioned, and I mentioned earlier of the strip mall that's, that's not owned by the same landlord. So, so now we've got that whole issue of Party A, Party B, Party C, where there is really a conflict. And, and when Party C is empty and that landlord's trying to get somebody in and they don't really care about minimum parking and the impact on A and B, I think there, there's inherent conflict there. So I don't know if there's, if there's some kind of a, anything greater than certain square footage, we eliminate the, the parking minimums? And so the small stuff where you have those conflicts, maybe you continue them. But I agree, there's, there's no reason that the Meyer facility and Stone Creek should have the parking that it has. And I think you're right, I think it was designed for Good Friday, which, they're not Good Friday, but the Friday, the Friday, Black Friday, thank you. For Black Friday and retail has changed, we all understand that. And it's time maybe for the zoning code with regard to parking on those large retail developments to also change.
And I think where we were going with it, or you were going with it initially was, is it something that could go before BZA? If we make some kind of condition, is I think.
Well, where I kind of was going was if you don't, if you don't touch it, if you don't modify it, there is an existing remedy for it, through the Board of Zoning Appeals and through us, correct? I, so you could just do nothing and you still have those, those review boards. But maybe I've landed on something that at larger developments of greater square feet, that no minimums apply and smaller developments of, of X square feet or less, there is requirements that someone has to approve.
We can take a look at that for sure.
I think if you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
One of the few things that basically everywhere it's been attempted, it's worked. And I've done a lot of research on it. The single and two families, like I've said, I'm, I'm not all in on that. And I've seen places where it does become a problem. The eliminating minimum parking requirements, it's been managed well, I guess, because I've never, I can't find a case study where people have regretted it and fire alarm or going back, you know?
Well, just look at the Meyer development, if, if, if we, if, if, a lot of that, those parking bays that are never used or, or that they're used by the semi-trucks, if that was eliminated, how much, how much buffer you could have had with the residential behind it or whatever the case may be. I just think it provides for a much better product because you don't have that huge requirement of all that asphalt.
Right, Walmart South as well.
I totally agree, that, that larger developments, I think you're on to something for sure.
I'm thinking that the elimination provides for that, it, it forces that discussion where if we continue to have the parking minimums, then you're starting from that point of having to go through an appeal process, a PD process to, to create those minimums. I, I think you've probably noted, I, you know, kind of pointed us toward a happy medium. Maybe there is some way that we can get there. It's not, uh, I, I, I can't imagine that it's as simple as it sounds, right? I, I can't imagine that it's as simple as it sounds, right?
It can't be, because when you develop new land, it's different than, you know, a thousand dollar, I mean, a thousand square foot, very small store. For example, you talk about Stone Creek, we're actually working with a developer to bring in iMasters to the location right next to Best Buy. And that's been a grass field.
LensCrafters.
LensCrafters, sorry, that's what it was called when I was a kid, Kansas City. Yes, so, long ago.
Well, I wonder, you've mentioned a couple of times about the master parking plan. Maybe if we look at the high level, maybe it will help us understand where we're at now.
It would be where you go on to Colrain.org, click Planning and Zoning, and you apply for a master either use plan, parking plan, or sign plan. And we're still ironing it out. Like, as you can see in the resolution, it's called Parking, Architecture, and Landscaping. I, because I wanted the acronym PAL. But I think just putting parking will actually be great. And you go in and you would have to put a site plan, show me where all the parking spots are, and you'd have to answer a ton of questions. And this has to be done to be able to develop in Colrain Township. And if these questions, if anything is alarming, we're going to go back and say, hey, this doesn't make sense. Hey, you don't have enough spots right here. And at the end of the day, there is a remedy in the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is Appeal of Administrator Decision. So our decision can be, you're going to create a development that is going to be a burden to the neighbors around you. And frankly, with the bar, if people are going to that bar at Galbraith and Colrain, I think you said, and parking inappropriately, they're going to get towed. So at the end of the day, we're not wanting that, but also, that will, that problem will iron itself out.
But what gives you the teeth if your minimum is zero?
Oh, there, there's other dimensional standards. There's landscaping standards such as you have to have a landscape island, I think of ten or every ten or twelve spots. So really, if you look at the landscaping and the parking requirements, it does kind of formulate a parking lot of sorts for you to meet the requirements. It's just saying that, like Walmart South, there's a giant space in the middle of that whole parking lot that would be great for a Sonic or a sit-down restaurant, or maybe even a small department store. That we can never do because of the parking minimum requirements.
It's not going to say, if you're a restaurant, you have to have fourteen spaces per thousand square feet.
So arbitrary, you know?
And that's, that's part of the fight that I mentioned earlier. It's, the restaurant is a carryout pizza. There is no sit-down. You do not need fourteen spaces. But that's the requirement in our code. So those are the...
It's in a box.
No, it, again, zoning is not as simple as somebody might hope and think it is. Because you can't write zoning code to fit every nuance and scenario. So that's why we have zoning commission and BZA, to where we discuss these things and you have a proper appeal process. But we're, we're trying to make some adjustments now that maybe pushes toward a particular direction. And certainly is something new for Colrain. A lot of communities, more communities are moving in that direction. They, they are.
I totally get it.
And as David said, there is, there are no cases that he has seen where people have regretted it. And that doesn't mean we won't.
Yeah, that's right.
So it's not that really there's no minimum, it's that you have a safe fail built into other areas of the code?
Yeah, technically, but we don't say, it's just so arbitrary to say, like you said, the restaurant example. So it's not like we give a number. It's more like, okay, you can make that parking lot. And, but your building has to be a certain size and has to be set back here, and you have to have these landscaping elements within your parking lot. And you have to have bicycle spaces, we have in the resolution. I don't know if that will end up passing at the end of the day. But, um, you have to have it, so we kind of lay it out in the code, and then it's built that way. But we don't want to put on top of all those requirements, which are great. Oh, and you have to have twenty-eight spaces, because then they're like, well, I did everything you wanted and I only have twenty-four. It's a lot of government red tape, and it's really not necessary because we, us, KZF and ZoneCo did write a really fantastic parking and landscaping section.
Okay, any other comments or feedback?
I really like the idea of eliminating it. I think it allows, you know, us to use logic. Like you were saying, the current resolution paints with very broad brush, and I don't think that makes any sense. I think allowing you to apply logic to, oh wait, they're going to use it high intensity during this time of the day, or, you know, this, yeah, no, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Right, and starting the conversation, I was on the other side of that, but I appreciate the dialogue and understanding why you're coming to us with that, so.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a big change. It is a big change, and it's scary to think about. But I think if you do sit down with someone and you explain the benefits to it, you know, most people do come around to the idea that it could be great for the township economically. We'll also be one of the first around here. Cincinnati, I think, is doing it. But we will have the advantage because if somebody comes to Colrain for infill development. Now, that would be great for us, but if Springdale does it at the same time, and all these places do it, then we're not going to be, we're not going to have the edge. So doing it a little bit before these places, because I promise you, they won't have parking minimums in ten years, but they also won't get the development that we get. Okay, bicycle parking is part of the plan.
Okay, able to fix that screen or not?
I don't, I don't know what's going on. There's not much of it.
So before we jump to bicycles, we were on your PAL.
Oh, PAL, okay. So yes, they would have to put a, a plan on paper. They would have to answer a couple dozen questions about their plan, so that it's on record. They'd have to sign their name. And it would be a living document in the township offices. So whenever the next person comes and wants to redevelop, or change the parking lot, expand the building, they would have to amend the master parking plan. And that's done administratively, and as long as it follows the code. If it's something that they want something special on, they would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, if they're in a PD, they'd have to come to you guys. So that would live on file. Same with the master sign plan and the master use plan. So these are just saying on paper, this is what we allowed you to do. If you want something different, you have to come amend it. We don't know what the fee schedule will be like on that yet, so I can't answer anything about that. But, um, it's a little bit of government red tape, but just for the end of making sure that they are following the zoning resolution and that everybody understands. If we're going to not make you have this many parking spaces like Springdale and West Chesterwood, then you agree to follow these standards.
And under landscape, so four point three point two. And I wrote down the word monumental, because you've said it a couple of times. So I want to be monumental. So, Colrain Township over the past five or so years has done a ton of work to become green and sustainable. So I wanted to propose that we add in our landscaping standards that twenty-five percent or even more than that of the trees, bushes, plantings, everything that we are putting in, that we are asking for those items to be Ohio native trees, plants, shrubbery. And that would go with our keep it pollinated theme and, and the pollinator garden, helping those monarchs and all the other things that are out there. So we could be that monumental community that takes it even a step farther into our, our zoning regulations.
Absolutely, we can definitely make that change. Does anyone else support that? Yeah, okay, great. We're gonna do it.
I would get my yavel and make them.
I said, at least not invasives, you know, like...
Yeah, I think it says in there's something about not having invasive. It also, I think, says somewhere, I can't point to it, but that you would have to keep as much native as you can to fulfill the requirements.
Existing, that you can, not native, yeah.
But we can make a requirement that with the existing and whatever you bring in, you have to be at a twenty-five percent threshold of native Ohio plants. Do you want us to list them, or do you want us to just use that kind of general?
No, I, I think there's such a wide variety that I think they might have fun looking into it. But if they need help, I'm ready. And then just a point of clarification for me. Is this mainly we're looking at commercial properties right now, or is something residential?
For landscaping, it would virtually be all commercial unless you have a very large multifamily development.
Okay, then I'll keep my last comment until we get to another section.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I understand the bicycle parking may not push through, but there is a minimum bicycle, number of bicycle parking requirements that was added to this resolution, and I wanted to know the commissioner's thoughts on it. When I can find it, I will read it. Okay, so the code is going to be section four point five point seven C. Bicycle parking and storage. Where off-street parking areas having more than eighteen hundred square feet and/or five or more parking spaces are installed, bicycle parking facilities shall also be provided and shall meet the following standards. Bicycle parking shall be provided at a rate of one space for every ten vehicular spaces. And bicycle parking facilities shall be permanent structures that are anchored to the ground. And bicycle parking facilities shall be located within fifty feet of the entrance. What are our thoughts on that?
Again, this is just, this is not residential at all. This is just commercial.
You have to have five or more non-residential parking spaces and eighteen hundred square foot in the parking lot. Uh, five point, four point five point seven C.
Four, four five seven.
Four five seven C. What you're seeing on that is very extreme urban type of code that you'd see in an inner-city area where people do ride bikes a lot. There's something called form-based code in planning and zoning, where you make a code for what you want to see with the idea that eventually down the line, you'll see what you made. So if we require these places to have parking, bicycle parking, the justification behind that is eventually people will utilize those things. Because they'll feel like they can, because they see the infrastructure. And then we'll end up with more people, less people using cars and more people riding their bikes. That's the idea. Nobody in the township's a hundred percent on board with it, but nobody is zero.
I'm not finding...
Four five seven C? Did it change?
I'm not finding four five seven at all.
Our table goes four point five point two, and then it goes to four point six.
Okay, so it's under parking requirements in non-residential zones?
Do you have page number?
I may be looking at, it may have shifted off. Yeah, okay, look up parking requirements in non-residential zones.
There's four six. Parking requirements.
No, next page.
Non-residential.
Non-residential.
Try four point six point six.
Four point six.
Yep, that's it. Four point six point six C. Sorry, guys. Like I said, we've adjusted a few small things, but I guess that...
Page two oh eight.
Two oh eight.
And when you say...
So this is saying that in addition to vehicles, you must provide bicycle parking?
If you build a Wendy's and it has eighteen hundred square feet of a parking lot and more than five spaces, you have to put one bicycle space for every ten vehiculators. And that would be one example of what's something that would go on the master parking plan, by the way. If this passed through, you would have to answer the question about bicycle parking, just to give you an example of what we talked about earlier.
I mean, that goes back to the M-word of being monumental.
Yeah, I, I guess where I'm at is I, I don't have a conceptual problem with, with bicycle parking and the requirements thereof. I don't know that one space for every ten, that seems like a lot, but I, I don't know that it is or it isn't, frankly. I, I guess I don't have a problem with it. It becomes more of an issue, though, of the whole circulation issue within the township is, is concerning in terms of biking on Colrain or biking on, on Galbraith. I mean, it's just, it's not Loveland, it's not where there's a bike trail, it's, yeah. So, so the infrastructure isn't there, in my mind, to, to, to have this requirement.
I mean, we do have a lot of walkers, and I'm starting to see a lot of electric scooters and things, and...
That's true. But that's not to say that someday it won't be, but I don't know. I don't, I, to your point, do you provide this? This, do you require this parking and therefore you have it, and then will people use it in terms of, you know, being on the, on the major roads in terms of bikes? I don't know.
I mean, if we're taking away the parking spot minimum, it seems a little counterproductive to have a bicycle parking minimum.
Nobody ever pointed that out.
I could see saying, well, we just had that long one, so it was like hanging right there.
It is logical.
Yeah, so I'm a fan of bicycle parking. I don't know if I'm a fan of throwing just a number out because we want a number.
Yeah.
I think it, it doesn't increase, you know, parking lot spaces, you know, significantly, which a parking lot minimum does. I think, I like the fact it's aspirational, you know, I think, you know, why not allow someone, rather than walking up Colrain Avenue, to ride their bicycle up the sidewalk? We have increasing number of sidewalks around the township, I feel like, you know. I, I like the fact it's aspirational. I think we, you know, we could become a bicycle-friendly community, you know, if there was more work put into it, and this is a good first step.
It also sends a message when people see that, that Colrain is green. Like, oh, they actually care about like having bicycle parking here. You don't see that in a lot of places.
It seems like the cost of doing it is minimal, right? It would take very little space installing a bicycle, you know, places. I can't imagine that's very expensive, right? So like...
Right, it's like a bike rack.
I think the cost benefit of it is, you know...
It has to be permanent, but...
As long as it don't put the handicap further away from the door.
No, they would still have to meet the requirements for AD.
Yeah, I'm a fan. I'm not a fan of the number.
What number would you propose?
I don't think, do parking racks, are you, say, ten bikes in a rack? I, I don't know enough about it to...
We could do something like, a minimum of three or five spaces. And then, you know, one for every twenty-five additional spaces, so that way everyone has some. But only the places like Meyer or Walmart are going to have those big, you know, twelve-bike rack things. So we could look at it that way, where there's a minimum...
Or just have it as a question on your PAL, and say, how are you going to address bicycle parking? And then you have the conversations?
What would be my, my baseline standard for approving or denying that? That, that it, that it goes with the essence of their plan, that they would have addressed bicycle parking? I think that's fair. I don't think that, that's an overstep of the zone administrator power either, so. Okay, so we're going to take out the requirement of one for every ten. And then we're going to leave that they have to be permanent structures securely anchored to the ground, and that they have to be located within fifty feet of the door. Is everyone good with that?
I feel like the, the only problem with taking away the one for every ten is that it's very subjective then. And then you get an administrator who's not as bicycle-friendly and then, you know, could fear one way or another. I don't know. I kind of like the one for ten if it's just sort of a guideline, you know? Yeah, I'd, I'd say minimum of three and...
I'm fine, if, if we're going to have a number, I'm fine with a number that is there.
Okay. Is anyone not?
Someone said the risk and reward. I think you were right on it. I, I think this is not that big of an issue.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
I mean, if you're going to expense of building a whole new parking lot, and you have to do handicap spaces and handicap signs, I don't see that additional... I mean, you, when you're talking a space for bicycle, you're talking a rack. That's what's in essence you're talking about, is a bicycle rack. I just don't see that that's a significant issue.
Okay, all right, we'll leave it. Thank you, guys. Uh, the few others that I wanted to bring up. There... Okay, so I guess this is a good time to bring up the change architectural standards. Did anyone... Did anyone notice that they, their architectural design standards got a lot more strict? We'll talk about signs later, but as far as architectural design, let me just go through some of the changes that were made. So.
Since we do not have a projector, can you get us close to the section?
Yeah, David, where are we at? For architectural design standards, it's gonna be somewhere in the back of the. Building unlocks. It's gonna be at the beginning of four, yeah, okay. So it's gonna be in four two, four point two. And it's gonna be back at four point two point six. And when everyone's there, I'll go ahead.
Do you have a page number?
One eighty.
Thank you.
One eighty.
All right, I'm with you.
Okay, the first thing I'll say is all the images have been updated, copies you don't have. There was an image that's been consistently used with Hollywood video, so we knew that we needed to get some new pictures in there.
We put Blockbuster.
Yeah, right, family video. So the flat roof, the facade massing, those requirements really were already there. There is a Fremont Township or City, Ohio, had some really great ideas in their zoning code and their community looks great. They were, they had, um, if you go a few pages back to where it says building mass and design, or design and mass. It's probably two or three pages forward. The requirement there being that a building has a base body and a cap.
Yeah, I saw that picture.
One eighty-three.
Yeah, one eighty-three. So this is basically prevent the prefab, you know, siding buildings from popping up on Corrine Avenue. There was a recent building that was developed where they really fought us on the, you need a twenty-foot offset every forty feet. They didn't wanna do that, but you would have had a two-hundred-foot-long blank wall on Corrine Avenue with nothing but garage doors facing Corrine Avenue. And we absolutely stopped that. We made them change. We made them follow the code, but it did kind of open our eyes that more people are gonna try that in the future. So, uh, these few changes, if they go through, I think will lead to more quality development, especially along the corridor. I think that, this is just my urban planning opinion, is that, uh, we start at the curb with signage. If we require extremely nice signage and we require extremely nice architectural standards, as to, over time, as people develop. There is no option for being a rundown township. We're not gonna have it where we have a mass exit and we lose fifty percent of our population. So people will continue to develop here and if it has to be good development, then it's gonna be a positive domino effect. That will raise property values. It will make it a better place to live. But it does start at the curb with signs and it works back to how do these buildings look? And then it, you factor in a little bit of what do we value? Do we value cars? Do we value walking? Do we value knowing your neighbors or do we value that situation where you live right here and like I mentioned earlier? So this is just part of it. So the building would basically not be able to be a prefab metal building. Building transparency is new. The next section. Stripped shopping centers and other multi-tenant commercial buildings shall dedicate a minimum to forty percent of the length of the front facade at each tenant space to windows or transparent entrances. And then it breaks it down a little more. If you have ten thousand square feet, twenty-five percent of the front of your facade has to be glass. Has to be see-through and transparent windows, not windows with stickers on them. This is, uh, great for the fire department. This is also great for design, uh, to be able to see what's inside of a building you're going in. It also is more of a timeless design than these big box stores that you go in and you're kinda closed off from the real world. So that was added. Shopping centers, the next section, having to have a consistent architectural theme, material, color, texture, scale. Uh, is just, I think, something that always should have been in there. Individual businesses or franchises, I hear it all the time. This is just how, it wasn't them, but McDonald's does it. This is the plan McDonald's gives everyone. You just have to accept this. We specifically put in there, no. Uh, multi-sided architecture, uh, may be one of the ones that I think may be a little bit over the top. It's saying every side of the facade has to be finished in the same manner as the front of the facade. That might not be right for this community, but I'll let you guys decide that. Infill development, there's an example picture that shows good infill development that is consistent with the character of the area. And infill development that you see in a lot of small towns in Ohio specifically, but also in Colrain Township. Where they don't, do not even consider the area. They just build exactly what they want and it ends up making an area look like very choppy. So, um, I'd like to know the commissioner's thoughts on these architectural design standard changes.
Anybody?
Uh, just a, a couple of things. I, I think you've done a really good job here because we always talk about architecture and we talk about, you know, we want the facade to do different things. And here you've, you've kind of. Put in words what, in pictures, exactly what are the standards, the minimum standards, so thank you for that. The only thing I guess I'm struggling with is multi-sided architecture and here's, here's where I'm at. For sure, the front. I think anything that you can see from the road is maybe where it should be or from a, from a, from a residential district. So in other words. I'll use, um, Stone Creek again. The Stone Creek has kind of a. Where the Myers, uh, where the, uh, the, the truck docks are, there, there's, there's a whole well of truck docks that are just typical. Block buildings or block facades. And I think that's probably appropriate there because it's just trucks. It's, that's all it is. Trucks, it's service, it's garbage trucks, it's dumpsters, so on and so forth. You can't see it from the road. The only way that you see it from even the parking spaces is you have to go back in there. That makes sense to me, but if I'm looking at that as a residence, that, that is not appropriate. First, it should be screened. It should be buffered, but even, uh, maybe that should be the standard. In terms of, of, of what you build on the facade should be on rear if it's, if the resident, if the residents gotta look at it. So that's kinda where I'm at, but I, I don't know that every building. Within the, every new building in the township, all four sides have to be the same.
Right.
But I certainly think front, what you can see from the road, what you can see from, or adjacent to a residential district, might be the way to go.
Agreed.
Okay, great. Okay, so is there any other thoughts? Are there any other thoughts about the architectural design standards?
No, I agree. Good job.
Thank you. So the last one I have, and then I'll turn it over to anything you guys might have, is, uh, the one that I worked the hardest on, um, it's signage. And the signage, we rewrote completely from the ground up, but we didn't just randomly, we weren't the kings on the throne just picking. I used, uh, other townships and cities in Ohio mostly for inspiration on what they do. And I picked, purposely picked the communities that looked the best. So I hear, I've heard a lot of times in very unfortunate places in the township, it's just Colrain. I don't live here, but it offends me to hear that because, um, I think that kinda thinking is the reason why in the nineties. In Colorado, they were showing pictures of Colrain Av- Colrain Avenue with the signage as an example in urban planning, planning classes of what not to do.
It still circulates Facebook today.
Yeah. So it went thousands of miles away. And I don't wanna be that example anymore. I think that we've come a long way. I look at pictures that were taken by the planning and zoning department in nineteen ninety-five that are on the Colrain Facebook page every week. And we have come a long way. We've got rid of a lot of them, but we need to get rid of the rest of them. And so this is, this is all my opinion. I feel very strongly about it, so I'll try not to be biased, but I am.
Can I interject when you say get rid of? It's change over time.
I was being a little colorful with my speech, but I forget we're in a recorded meeting. I don't wanna get rid of every sign in a township.
Sign companies or businesses think they're coming after them with a long time.
I'm not getting rid of every time, sound, sign in a township, but I do think that it's time to update some of the inappropriate ones.
You, you, we're setting a new standard and then over time, sometimes it will be sooner than, than later. Sometimes it's gonna take longer because they're not changing their sign. It's costly. We get that.
Yeah.
So over time, I think the trajectory is what we're shooting for here and.
Thanks for clarifying.
They, they are, they're, this is, these are excellencies that I think, and we do certainly, that make the community look good, feel good. And that's, that's our goal.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying. Definitely. And it, like I said earlier, it starts at the curb. So if we make these signs look good, I think it's gonna. So the first thing that I wanna take out of here is the comprehensive sign plan. I think I was thinking about it a little bit too deep, but that was kinda for zoning commission to evaluate. But I think if someone has a plan development and it comes to you guys, um, with a master sign plan for you to decide on. Um, I think that's the appropriate way to go, not as confusing for the applicants. So that will be an update you'll see later. Also, uh, side note, earlier you approved one and two. A plan development was not in one or two at that time. Uh, the person at KZF Zone Co. who was helping us with our rewrite decided to take plan developments out altogether. You said if your code is good enough, you don't need them. And we kinda decided that's not what we're gonna do, so it's re-entered. But there is a provision to plan developments that they have to be ten acres. So that's something to think about that was in that packet that I gave you all, but it was an earlier section you might not have read. So that, that's just about.
So the question is, P, PDs, well, I mean, we're talking about signs right now, but.
I was talking about the comprehensive sign plan for the PD and that kinda came up a little, so.
Correct.
Okay, so, uh, master sign plans, I would like to stay. KZF and Zone Co., according to them on all of our sign regulations, their opinion is there's one thing that's too extreme. And it was the requirement that a sign could only be up to three colors. Black and white being considered colors. A logo being considered as one color for the logo. So even if your logo has ten colors in it, it's one of your three colors. So basically, if you're gonna put a logo on your sign, you have your logo, you have your typeface in one color and you have the background. And they said that was too extreme. I based it on a rule in Dublin. So that's the way Dublin, Ohio does it. So, um, I wanted to be honest and tell you the feedback of KZF and Zone Co. cause they insisted that I take it out. But I wanted to leave it up to you guys. So think about that as we move through. So our, our legally required signs by, or our signs that are allowed by right are government or legal, legally required signs, like stop signs. Real estate signs, we're not going after realtors. Uh, up to, you have up to a year to have it up. After that, you just gotta come and get a simple permit from them. It'll be free. It's just to say, I know it's still there, you know. Residential information signs like no trespassing, beware of dog, things that are important to the safety of people coming onto a parcel. Residential yard signs would be more like congrats grad. We're not going after any of that. We would never go after political signs. Uh, I don't care if I agree with them or not. I would never, and nobody in the township would, um, and it doesn't even need to be stated frankly. There's something in the first part of this section, I'm jumping around a little, but related to political signs. It states that signage that the average person applying contemporary community standards depicts or describes a patently obscene, offensive, or hateful. Image or message either directly or indirectly and that lacks serious literary, artistic, political, religious, or scientific value is prohibited. So that is born out of a prohibited sign provision we had in our current zoning resolution that says, uh, obscene or offensive signs. Which is a very, like, that could be anything basically. So I kinda spelled it out there. If you don't want that in there. There's case law of townships and cities getting sued for.
I was just getting ready to ask because of freedom of speech, so.
We would probably never even lean on that. I only kept it because it was a number.
Obscenity is not legal speech, just like libel, slander, false advertising, but. It's harder to define that today as it was in nineteen seventy-three in Miller versus California, so. And this, this mirrors the Supreme Court decision fairly closely, uh, Miller versus California. But nonetheless, it's harder to fit into that today. Just, you know, cultures change.
So we can take that out or we can leave that in. Uh, I don't think we're ever gonna touch it.
And again, just for your reference, that's page two eleven in your packet.
Yeah.
The, the very bottom item, number six.
I don't think we're ever gonna use it. I think it just gives a little to, to the people that might do it, but won't because it's in there, cause they wanna follow the rules. I don't think we could really.
We, we had a resident who didn't like something that the township trustees voted on. And they put up an illegal sign in their yard and it stayed up for a little while, but then was taken down. We, we knew it was illegal, not because of the content, but because of the size. But we didn't, we didn't enforce the law against that individual.
We would not.
It was a discretionary item that we decided we're not gonna create a fight over this because the issue disappeared on its own.
Where, where's the wording on the obscene? I'm, I'm at your two eleven. What, what number?
It's in the very beginning, uh.
It's, it's on the second line, right in the middle.
Number two.
No, uh, no, it's page two eleven.
Yep.
Applicability under B.
B, yep.
Six.
B six.
Yeah.
We have been working with code enforcement to clean up some of the sign violations. We're definitely gonna, when the new resolution passes, amp that up. And I think a lot of the stuff in here will help us, so let's move on to prohibited signs.
Hold on, yeah, hold on, hold on. Now that I'm reading and I'm trying to.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, gotcha.
And David, I was kinda looking for it as you were talking. You said this, this language is, was, um, met a standard through, through.
So Miller versus California is a US Supreme Court decision that defined obscenity in nineteen seventy-three. And this is very close to that. It, it has very similar language that said if you, if. This material lacks these things, it has no social redeeming value, therefore it is illegal speech. So that's, that's how they defined obscenity.
I understand.
Also Reed versus Town of Gilbert, Arizona in twenty fifteen.
We're, we're really on a slippery slope here, you guys. I, I think a citizen should have the right in their, in their yard to put up a sign that says, I don't agree with the, with X. X could be the war, X could be abortion, X could be the, the vote of the trustees on a particular matter. I think that's a, that's a right that, that we have and under, under six, I, I don't know that that right. I think it can be challenged under six.
I'm comfortable striking, um, I just carried it forward cause it was in there before. Um, a lot of stuff obviously I got rid of, but I thought there may have been a reason it was in there before if you guys don't want it in there.
It's one of those things, if, if we're going to have a regulation, you're going to have to enforce it and if we aren't choosing to enforce it, then why have it in there?
Why have it in there?
I mean, if it becomes a police issue, then the police can deal with it on that side of the coin, but on the zoning side of the coin, I don't think. I don't, I don't see any value in it.
Yeah, I mean, again, there's a, there's a difference between content and. Say, size.
What he's thinking of is con- content neutrality. It's something I try to look at with signs.
That's, that is the goal for government. It's content neutrality. We don't care what you say. We care how you're saying it. Because your sign's too big.
Well, it's, it's too big, it's unsafe, it, 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 it's a traffic issue with regard to you can't see in the driveway.
Regardless of your.
The wind hits it, um.
Content, we enforce the same standard to everybody. Now.
We're gonna get rid of it.
Yeah, look, we'll just.
Good with everybody?
Yep. I wanna go back to the, your three, your three, um, colors. I think that's an overreach.
Okay.
Three colors to me is just a total overreach. I mean, KZF agreed with that.
They did, yeah.
Yeah, I think.
I wanted to let you guys decide.
My opinion is no.
Okay, get rid of the three colors.
I mean, that, that, three colors, when you start looking at the pictures, just a lot of those signs would not be permitted.
Oh, I was careful to try to choose signs that.
Well, Oshkosh, Wisconsin would not be permitted.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Greetings from Oshkosh, Wisconsin would not be permitted under here.
Okay, so we'll strike that. I thought that's what you guys would say, so that's perfectly fine. Um, Dublin, Ohio does it. If you wanna take a look at what their signs look like. Some people think that they look a little bit, uh, disorienting was the word, um, so.
Land.
I don't use that one.
Yeah, we.
Um, so prohibited signs. Um, so prohibited signs, are we ready?
Even we don't agree on everything, but it's okay.
It's okay though. So combustible signs, obviously. Don't use fire as part of your sign. Electronic signs, um, this is a change. So this would be that you can't, I, we don't have any more scrolling TV screen message board signs. We don't allow the billboard companies to do it. We shouldn't allow onsite. We don't need, I want us to change looking at signs from av- a business advertising. To us being able to find businesses, business identification. So I don't need to know that your chicken tenders are three ninety-nine when I'm driving down the road. It's distracting.
But not to call us hypocritical, but our fire stations just put in digital.
Yeah.
Scrolling type of boards.
And I don't thi- I don't view that as hypocritical because anyone can do it until this new one passes. So I understand if, if we were thinking of not doing this, why did we do that? But right now, the rule is that we can. But I think moving forward, we need less of that, just because they're distracting. There are some places that need it though. I think that message boards that aren't digital should still be allowed on institutional uses, like to let you know that there's like a school, a PTA conference. I think there should still be a message board outside, or a church picnic, or something like that. Um, or gas stations. Like they, they need to advertise the price of their gas, and they're not gonna stick the letters. So we want to keep those allowed.
You just don't want them to scroll.
I don't want anyone else to have them, and I, because it's distracting the motorists, and I don't want anybody to have the scrolling TV. Dancing image, only changes four times a minute, but really they change it every two seconds. Um, I think that those should be.
Standard fifteen seconds now.
That's what we tell them, and then they don't follow that ever. They're very bright in the morning. People have gotten car accidents because of them. They're just not needed here. They're basically TV screens while you're trying to drive down the road. There are other townships and cities that prohibit them. I think we should want them. Should I move on and then we talk about it at the end, or do you want to just get out of the way now?
I'm neutral. I, I'm fine with it, I'm fine without it.
Yeah, I understand your point, but then you have the whole economic development issue.
I understand your point, but when then you have the whole economic development issue of, well, if I can do it in Springdale or whatever, is that a more appropriate place for me? For my advertising? You know, it's, you can.
And there's nothing more distracting than your info center in your car. You know, it's right there in your face, you know, yip-yapping at you.
Yeah, it does.
Anything takes your eyes off the road.
But what do you think of the idea of using signage as identifying businesses and navigation rather than having these businesses advertise on our street? I think that's a good way to look at it.
I'm neutral.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Just to, just to jump off that example, the signs that are in drive-throughs that tell you. How much your chicken, chicken tenders are, those are still allowed, but those are not.
Menu boards.
Those are menu boards, they're not, uh.
Street signs.
Street signs, so.
And then on that, in that same vein, freestanding pole signs. This is, uh, more of the upscale townships and cities. Are right now getting rid of freestanding pole signs. They're in favor of only monument signs. Um, and there's a lot of reason for that. The freestanding pole signs being taller is that picture that was circulating Facebook that Ms. McMullin mentioned. Um, they're just, they're not useful anymore. Monument signs are more useful. You can see over them potentially. Um, and they're used with more natural materials such as brick, stone. So, um. We would require all ground sign to be monument if this plan goes through.
So you would not permit any additional pole signs?
No. And frankly, anyone who goes through BZA and tries to get a pole sign, I don't ever see a hardship for it. So. Higher rise signs, we've already prohibited. Uh, human signs are already prohibited. Inflatable, snipe, motion. Permanent banners and roof signs are already prohibited. I would add post and panel signs as prohibited. But that's somebody using a temporary sign in a permanent manner, so that would probably already be prohibited. Does anyone have any additional thoughts on what should or should not be prohibited signage?
I just have one comment, and it's just a, a statement of being fair.
Okay.
Um, friends with a lot of business owners in the community who have been targeted about their feather signs. Uh, but driving past a lot of the churches, they still have feather signs out. Just want to make sure that the standard.
Yeah, thanks for asking that. Um, is, we have tried to, uh, go through and address these as we learn about them. When these new signage standards pass, we have two new zoning staff starting this summer. We are gonna go through and take a picture of every sign that exists. And we are gonna make sure that once this passes, that people are going to follow the rules. So, um, we, to answer your question, yes, at that point, we're gonna go through and we're gonna do checks every month. To make sure that people are consistently having to take down illegal signage.
To your point, I think that those that remain have been addressed, but there's been a refusal to comply.
I, I have gone after churches, just to be clear. So I, I've gone to churches, I, I haven't targeted churches, but. I've gone to churches and told them they have to take it down. I would never.
No, but, but that's, that's certainly a challenge that we always run into, is, once again. Uh, one of our lead code enforcers right now is working through new processes. Of going to housing court, things that, that I, we think are gonna be more efficient. And so. Uh, it's, it's a balance that we're trying to find without being accused of favoritism. And, and so that's, it, I, I know exactly what you're talking about, and I, I have the same thought when I drive by those myself. And I'm going, why, you know, one company took them out because they were told they were in violation after they cussed us out, but.
Building the, building the, uh.
It's not the same one I'm thinking.
Yeah, it probably is.
Okay.
But nonetheless.
Infrastructure for those processes to, to address those takes significant time. I don't want to build it on the old code either.
Right.
Uh, you're to answer your question, yes, it will be fair. So I think that takes us to the last couple of sections of the sign ordinance. Um, and we can just go through each. Does anyone have any questions about the permitted signage? There's tables that show dimensions, and then there's additional requirements, and then there's a couple examples of each one. Yes?
Can you give us a page number again?
Just right after the permitted signs, it should be shown on charts for you. The whole, each chart is one page. Yeah, it looks like that.
It's harder being double-sided.
Two thirty-one.
Thank you.
Curb cut.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Says permitted signage, and then David has done an excellent job of. Showing pictures and then descriptions as you walk through the columns, you could see what is allowed or not allowed and how it is. In each column.
Perhaps someone could make the case that some of this is a overcorrection on the lax nature we have had at signage and, of signage in the past. Um, maybe one day, um, some of it can be ironed out. But for right now, I do think that everything I wrote. Is pretty much necessary for each one. If there's anything that anyone thinks is over the top, you live here, I don't, I'm happy to strike. But, um, I will just quickly go through each one. I'm not gonna read every single line, we'd be here all night. But maybe I'll read the one that might be the most controversial from each one. So for curb cut signs, that's like the in and out signs when you go into like a Wendy's or something. Um, and there's some rules to that. Not a lot's changed on the dimensions, the first part of the table, but, um. Basically, it can only contain the words, drive through, in, out, enter, entrance, exit, welcome, thank you, or similar words. So I didn't want these to become little mini second signs, so. Any thoughts on curb cuts? Okay, moving on. Um, to wayfinding signs. These would be the signs that say like, you know, this way for service, this way for new cars. At car dealerships or anywhere of the sort. Um, and they can't be connected to the building. So these would be a freestanding sign. They have to be landscaped. So every ground sign has to have a landscaping base, which is a radius around the sign that has to have landscaping in it. Um, that will make the signs look a lot better. Okay. Next is gateway monument signs. This would be on the way into your big neighborhoods or your Stone Creeks or anywhere like that. They're allowed an extra sign that says only that, Stone Creek, Abbey Town. We don't want to take that away where a neighborhood can't have a. Nice big entry feature. That's, uh, gateways are part of what makes a place. So, um, I wanted to allow for those. There are a few kind of funny restrictions, like, uh, the developer can put their logo on the back in a very small place. So I kind of, again, designed the signs in the code for what they should look like that would be great for the township. Any questions on gateways?
No.
Okay, the next one is the most common one. We're calling them single identification monument signs. So basically a monument sign for one tenant. Um, they should have two sides mounted back to back, exactly the same. A corner lot can have two different monument signs. But they have to be completely identical. Um, the changeable copy boards aren't allowed, except as we talked about it, drive-throughs and gas stations. And then it gives some kind of restrictions for that, for institutional and automotive fuel service uses. Uh, these can only be up to five feet tall, but keep in mind, that's on top of a twenty-four inch base. So you're talking about seven feet sign, which is taller than any of us. Thoughts on monument? Okay, the next one is joint identification monument signs, which are the tall signs that say like, uh. Meyer and Taco Bell and Starbucks. So this is where, this is one that. Has the most extreme rules, because I think we have the most extreme problems. We've allowed in the last year, uh, a gigantic. Joint identification sign to remodel their sign, um, and basically reset the clock of when they have to turn it down, tear it down. They have tons of signs. So the, the extremeness on this one would probably be some of the things like. Um, you can only have up to five stores. If you think that's too restrictive, we could talk about it. But, um, I didn't want to see these big towering signs anymore. So they can only be up to. Um, ten feet tall plus the two-foot base. And that is in a, in a few places in the resolution where you can never have any sign again that's over twelve feet tall, no matter what. Basically, not in a PD. I can't say you can't get a variance for it, that would be illegal. But, um, twelve feet tall is kind of, I think, the sweet spot. If you guys disagree, I'm happy to talk about keeping it fifteen or doing more than five.
What's, what's the max pole sign now?
Fifteen.
Fifteen is the maximum of a pole sign?
Yeah, yes.
This is kind of replacing a pole sign in much more aesthetically pleasing manner.
Yes, absolutely.
And I'm good with that.
You're going about three feet shorter, but.
One, I, one question for you. So I, what happens now in the pole signs is every business wants to be on them. That's their identity on Colrain Avenue, right? And under, under this scenario, you're limiting to five. Does it make more sense to maybe to try to do it by linear feet of within the, the shopping centers so that it's not arbitrary of the first five?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So where I'm going with this is, anybody with over seventy-five feet of linear frontage on the building. Gets on the sign, or whatever the case may be, so that, that, I, I agree that if you have thirty businesses, well, that's too many. Fifteen businesses in the strip centers shouldn't be fifteen signs. But the bigger ones should be there, and if they're six or seven, then they're six or seven versus your arbitrary five.
Right. And, uh, you could only be on one under this scenario. So you couldn't have, uh, a GNC. That is on every mon- joint identification. But it does say on there, you can have one every five hundred feet of lot frontage. So the bigger shopping centers will be able to have a higher quantity of these.
I, I get it, but what I'm saying, no, 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 I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, is within the development of the strip center. That if you, there should be a, some kind of, in theory, a minimum that you have to be to get on the sign.
Oh, I see.
So, so your, your leasable frontage.
Yeah.
So where I'm going with that is, that if you have six or seven of those at seventy-five or greater feet, they should have the ability to be on here.
Okay.
Versus your arbitrary five.
Okay.
Now, I didn't catch your arbitrating five, but it could be three, it could be three signs.
It could be.
It could be three twelve-foot signs, yeah.
Probably have the five hundred feet required to get a second sign, and then you could have a total of ten stores.
That, and that, that's making sense to me, because I thought you were just limiting to one sign, and I'm like, I don't think that's fair for some of the.
Right, because that would essentially say Stone Creek would have the same max that basically. The bank would have or something, I don't know. But, uh, yeah, and I, I, I envision a lot of these joint signs just being two signs. They don't want to take the money to build their own base. So they say, let's put Arby's on top of Panera, and we'll split the cost. And that's what you see in Dublin a lot. You see a lot of duos, so. Um, basically, another rule is that you can only put one kind of anchor sign that's bigger than the others. Uh, I can think of a prominent shopping center in the township that has a lot of different sizes. It's chaotic, a lot of different colors. So this is just trying to like, uh, make everything a little bit more, uh, uniform would be the word. Some of those requirements are, if you look at the example, I think that's a great thing to strive for.
So under this scenario, and I guess currently, correct me if I'm wrong, under the existing code, there is the possibility, if you're in a strip center. You may not have frontage along, or signage along the front of Colrain potentially. Would that be correct, or is that incorrect?
Yeah, there's a lot of, uh, small storefronts that don't have signage, ground signs on the curb.
But, but, a, a ground sign I get, but would they potentially, potentially they're allowed a space on the pole sign? So where I'm going with this is, if, if everyone has the ability now to have, to have their business. Identified on the main road. Is it fair to modify it so now they don't?
I think so. I think that we could have the legal justification for saying you can't do ground signs, period, no matter who you are. And that would be really extreme, and we wouldn't do that, and we're not. But, um, you don't have the right. You don't have the absolute right to a ground sign just because you open your business. If there's available s- space on the pole sign, sure, that might be part of your contract. But we're not obligated to allow grounds, signs.
I understand, I'm not, my argument's not a ground sign. My argument is some type of identification along the main road.
Yeah.
Besides in the building, on the building facade.
Yeah.
It seems unfair to me. If you can do that now, with this change, that you can't do that. So your, your argument of economic development is just shot to all. If, if I can't have, if I can't have identity on the main road, I'm gonna fail. It's gonna be the.
And everybody wants to be on the main road, right?
But they want their, what I'm getting at is, they want to be on the main road, but they want to have identification on the main road.
You want your customers to find you.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I get that. I don't think there would be that many, because of the fact that they're allowed every certain feet, and you have, can have up to five on each one. I think, I don't think there are that many developments that have fifteen tenants.
Probably not.
Yeah, so I think it might be, uh, might not even be an issue. But if you want to raise that five, then we can certainly do that.
I just think, and the, the, I'm just, what I didn't want to do is, is, is through a change in the sign code. To eliminate someone's right to have signage somehow in an architecturally pleasing manner on Colrain Avenue. That's all I'm trying to do.
I respect that. Do we want to raise it? It should be an odd number, probably.
I, I'm kind of liking Tim's idea of the linear front footage standard. If you have X amount, then you're allowed this.
I, I, I'm just trying to make it.
We're gonna end up with signs with fifty tenants on them?
Well, to your point, I don't think you're gonna have strip centers with fifty tenants. I think those days are way behind us.
Yeah.
But I think you might have six or seven, and it, to me, it's unfair for those two to not be able to be on there somehow.
So if we made it twelve, would everyone, would there be any way that nobody would have access to a sign if we made it twelve?
I don't know. I'm, I.
Is it one of those things, again, we're talking parking spot minimums being removed? Do we need to have a sign maximum?
Well.
Is it something if, if this plan comes before you and now you have this? And you say, hey, you have thirteen stores represented on here, that's too many. You know, how can we bring it down in size? You know, maybe thirteen is appropriate, but maybe not all of them as big as what you have here, or something.
So.
Maybe it's just working.
Can we keep the, the, the design requirements for the more intense signs? Like the higher you go up in number of signs. The more intense the design requirements are. Like right now, it says for four to five stores, that they have to be. The same color of typeface and same color background. So if you look at the sign below, every typeface, every, all the words are in white, all the background's in black. And that's very slick looking, and they do that in Dublin and in Centerville. So is that something we could say where if you're gonna have that many signs, you have to meet, you have to make it less intense? Is that fair?
Yeah.
All right, we can do that. You got that? Drive-through, drive-in, drive-in, neither of these signs are mentioned, period, in our zoning resolution. I had to come up with these basically whole cloth. Um, but the biggest thing is you won't be able to see any of these from the main road. So your drive-through sign, you can't make it parallel to Colrain Avenue anymore, because then all you're seeing is cars when you drive by. So your drive-through sign, you can't make it parallel to Colrain Avenue anymore, because then all you're seeing is cars when you drive by, and you have to screen it. So, that's basically the only kind of big requirement there. Wall signs, next. Uh, no more cabinets, they have to be channel letters. Cabinets, you basically end up with a permanent legal non-conformity that can get a face change forever. Um, the channel letters are, would go a long way into making even very basic buildings look very nice. That would be the biggest.
Not being in the trade.
Sure.
Explain to me what that means.
Oh, you see how Whataburger's cut out letters?
Yes.
Okay, it was on a one panel flat and not three D, and then placed into a box that is against the wall. That would be considered a cabinet sign. And you see those on Central Plaza. Think about it, where the Minute Minute is and Hobby Lobby, they all have those cabinets.
Wendy's is a cabinet sign, sticking that on the building is what they don't want.
Okay, makes sense, thank you.
Yep. Um, I think it's one of the biggest best changes. I'm actually okay with a higher square footage of wall signs, if variances have to be given for that. Because usually when you spend the money to get more wall signs, you're not trying to get some advertising on the road. You're trying to make your building look good. So um, I think I was pretty fair on wall signs. And then next, we have awning canopy, not really worthy of even mentioning. Blade signs, or the signs that stick out of the side of the building. If we redevelop Northgate Mall, uh, or any other area potentially one day, uh, into a downtown type of feel, these would be really appropriate types of signs to use. Window signs, I think that people abuse the window signs, I don't need to know that you have twenty-nine ninety-nine breaks when I'm driving down the road. So I think that should be part of your master sign plan, what you're gonna put on your window. Since we count wall signs, I mean. And then the light-up signs on the window. No, nobody, no great community is allowing those. Portable signs, I think, need to be allowed for food trucks, small businesses. And I'll be upfront about another extreme one I put in here. Uh, so, stores with permanent ground signs are not eligible for a portable sign. So I was looking at places that are, would fall under the use category of alternative financial services, let's say. And they have ground signs and banner signs, and then I saw a sandwich board sign outside their door. I was thinking sandwich board signs are good for like food trucks, or people who have patios and like people who are walking by in a downtown kind of feel, or like White Oak. But the places that have the road signs and they're just trying to get more free advertising, that's why I put that in there, if you want to strike it out. I wouldn't be offended.
Have at it, I'm fine with it.
All right, great, moving on, burnt banner signs, um, these would be temporary signs. I could update the language a little to allow for other types of temporary signage. Uh, temporary signage is a slippery slope, but I did allow, I did put specifically in there, you can have holiday signs and construction signs. Then we get to two fun ones. And I want these, township personally, but placemaking art sign. So if you look at that Stanley sign, we need, I believe we need more of that in this township. I think we need something that is a landmark that is signage. Now, that's talking out of both sides of my mouth, because I said our signage is crazy in Colrain Township. But if we had really nice landmark type of signage, I think that would actually be a net positive for the township. Um, the process I put in here, I don't know logistically if it should or can be allowed, but I put that it would have to go to the Board of Trustees for approval. Because I don't feel comfortable saying your forty-foot tall uh, neon sign is appropriate for this township, I don't live here. So do you guys think that's fair, or do you want me to change it to zoning commission?
No.
I think trustees is.
Appropriate.
Appropriate, yeah.
All right. And I put that they would only review the first five applications a year. Because I don't want them to get inundated, inundate, hating the idea. So, and then our last one, mural signs is the same concept. I put in there that they can't have an indirect or direct commercial message. So um, that Oshkosh one is an example of another, really it is a placemaking art sign. But specifically, it would be a township man, or township approved mural that creates a landmark.
And that's also trustee approval requirement?
Yes, thank you, that would be trustee as well. They would only do five a year. Okay, so, any last thoughts about approved signage? Okay, the design standards, we've struck out the three colors thing.
What section are you on for that?
I'm sorry, four point seven point four.
Okay.
We all know what locations, I skipped that one, because like you can't have a sign in the right of way. Other blade signs though, can stick in the right of way, but whatever. Um, so, it would be four point, uh, is it four point seven point four? On yours?
No. That's murals and signs.
Okay, four point seven point five. So if you look at three, that explains the three colors thing, that Dublin has that I wrote into this code. And it is gone now, which is okay. And then if you look at five, um, I put, that you couldn't basically put hours of operation, phone number, websites, QR codes, prices, sales promotions, any of that stuff on signage. Again, we're looking at signage as wayfinding and I, business identification. Multisided signs have to be the same on both sides. Um, you have to have a building number. Uh, structural supports have to blend with the surroundings, can't be shown, so again, high quality, very nice signage. And then if you look at the landscaping standards, which is the next one, the base of monument signs have to have living plants, uh, and it talks about the minimum size. Uh, it talks about the landscaping plan within the master sign plan. And it's very basic ground level stuff. And then if you look at the next section, illumination is internal, external, or what we call halo, or indirect, where you can see that Red Brick Pizza logo. That would be kind of where you light up the building wall behind it, and it lights up the letters.
Yeah, I love those.
Yeah, they are very sharp looking. Uh, that's all that I have on signage. Overall, again, the last thing I'll say is, a case could be made that it's an overcorrection, but it's an overcorrection we need. And hopefully one day, we can look back and, it's gonna take twenty years for all these signs to change over. But in twenty years, I think we're gonna look a lot different than we do now.
Agreed. And I think you did a great job.
Thank you.
I agree.
David put in a lot of time researching, drafting. Yeah, he's a little obsessed, little OCD on signage, but.
So help us, help us with um, kind of process, kind of where this goes, what you need from us.
Sure.
Uh, are the trustees looking at a draft, kind of, kind of how it's, how you guys see it going?
So we have not provided any drafts yet to the trustees. Uh, we're running these through the zoning commission first, so uh, Article one, two, three, four, and then five, six, and seven will be next. Uh, and then, we will take all your comments, incorporate those in this. Uh, as we have mentioned, we're still, you know, making just minor tweaks to uh, some of the language, nothing substantive, that, that's gonna be a surprise for you. It will, uh, we're, we're gonna also meet with uh, some stakeholders in the community uh, that would have an interest, particularly businesses, right? That's uh, the, the ones that would have a, a special interest just to make sure that, you know, they're, they're also understanding where we're going with all of these, and see if they have any concerns, and they'd provide feedback. They're, they're not as likely to be paying attention to these kind of things until it's passed, and then they say, wait a minute, so. That's uh, the goal there. So through that, we'll create one final presentation to the zoning commission for you to consider. Did, did we create two meetings as a first hearing and a second hearing?
Yeah, you would hear, you'd hear the public hearing, and then since it's so very important, you would go home for a month and think about it, and then come back before you vote on it.
So we were gonna provide, you know, two, two different hearings, so he, here you would have a, this final version to look at. Again, make some tweaks if you need to, and then we'd come back and vote on it at the zoning commission, send it on to the Board of Trustees for them to then consider what you have recommended to them.
The vote will probably be the September meeting.
And here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got one other thing that we missed in section three.
Sure.
Three point four point two five, oh, I'm sorry, three point four point two, yeah, point two five. It's on page one forty-one. And it has to do with the amateur radio antennas. It says here that it shall not be less than sixty feet in height, and not to exceed a hundred feet. But then if you go down to minimum setbacks, it says if the antenna is, that is forty-five feet or less. There's a.
Yeah, inconsistent.
There's two things that I, I feel that you should change on this, and one of them being antenna and tower instead of just antenna.
For sixty feet?
And the minimum of sixty feet should be striped.
Okay.
Okay? The other thing you should add in there that it must apply to, must adhere to all FCC rules. Because there's, it in, the hundred-foot max is gonna be, that is contestable.
Yeah.
Okay? In a residential area, when you, when the uh, property, by FCC rules, if it falls, it has to fall on your property. Okay? So, uh, but that is contestable if they want to put something higher than a hundred feet. Not many people would, but if they did.
Okay, so, so at three, four, twenty-five A, maximum height.
Maximum height.
So you're saying delete.
Shall not be less than sixty feet.
Okay.
Delete that. Because, as we know, I mean, you go into Burke and the house is twelve foot tall, you put a ten-foot pole up and a ten-foot antenna, or twelve-foot antenna, you're less than sixty feet.
So the maximum allowed height of an amateur radio antenna?
You have it, you have it at a hundred feet, or the width and length is a formula in there, and that's probably out of the FCC guidelines.
Sorry, that's something we, we didn't even consider the subject at all.
Okay, so.
I, I understand, but.
So it's gonna read, the height of amateur radio antennas shall not exceed the lesser of one, one hundred feet, or two, total width, total depth.
Yeah, and I also feel you need to put antenna and tower.
Okay, and that is in A, the height of amateur radio antennas and tower shall not. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Good, good, good.
You all agree, right? Okay, great.
Yeah.
Um, the PD thing.
And then, let me, let me just, again, B, minimum setbacks, amateur radio antennas that are forty-five feet or less, that, that forty-five still okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It's just that minimum.
We, we fixed A. All right, good, go ahead.
Okay.
And, and then if you also put in there that it must adhere to FCC rules.
Yes, and I added that.
Because there's places in the township are less than ten miles from the airport, they can't put up a hundred-foot uh, antenna.
Because we might have.
But there are places in the township that they could.
To Northgate, you know?
But it, it, it has to be enough, it has to be a FCC limited airport, like Greater Cincinnati or Lunkin.
Yeah, that's good. It's a good catch, thank you.
So.
Plan development.
Yes, so two things that changed are the ten acre thing, which I want to hear opinions on, and then um, eliminated in the letter. So we want to facilitate mixed development, because, to be sustainable. And uh, so we didn't think a PDI, PDB, PDR was really, it doesn't even mean anything honestly, because there's no rules between them. So we would just move forward, calling everything PD. So, I don't, I see a lot of nodding, that's good. What about the ten acres though? Didn't see a lot of nodding there.
Tell me.
Does a PD, if we're going to have a, a PD, allow that in the future, has to be a minimum of ten acres?
What do we have now?
There's no minimum.
No.
We've had PDs under an acre.
Why, why would we do that? Why would we make a minimum ten acres?
Basically, we have given up a couple hundred parcel or, or something, what was it, like fifteen percent actually?
Yeah.
Of the township land into planned developments, and we'll never have a say on again, only if they come modify. So um, we wanted to make it where if you truly were needing to make a planned development, which the purpose is to have high quality development, right? That won't fit the zoning code, that'll be consistent throughout the development, then you need a bigger piece of land. And we see a lot of people who are like, I want a gas station, and I'm gonna put it through a PD so that I can just do whatever I want. So we're saying, no, if you really are gonna plan a district, that district needs to be ten acres. There was a strong recommendation from our consultants. And there's precedent for nearby townships and cities, I don't know which ones offhand, but we would not be groundbreaking.
But then you're sending everything potentially to Border Zoning Appeals, or you're, you're, you're doing variances at this board, either way?
We would be doing variances, but if you think about it, think about the Border Zoning Appeals, and if, let's say, QuickTrip, which is not in the area, wanted to come to the area and said, no, I'm not following your stupid sign rules and your design rules, I'm gonna go to the Border Zoning Appeals, um, and ask for twelve variances. The Border Zoning Appeals is gonna see that coming, and I don't think it would get approved in the same way.
But the zoning commission might say, we're not gonna allow twelve variances in the PD either.
You might say that through the PD process.
Right.
But PD is planned district, it's not planned QuickTrip. QuickTrip's a great company.
I hear you.
I hate to single them out, they're, they're great. But it's, it's supposed to be a district, not a parcel.
We tend to see more PDRs, you know, just these communities being developed, and it's usually the density, they want to have, you know, the setbacks and squish in houses on the tinier lots and and where, you know, there's a purpose for that. I, I could see us wanting to have the majority of what is developed at a community standard, and then any of those variances that are needed, then go to the BZA. So, meaning that we have our standard, we live and die by our standard, but there are exceptions to the rule. So I could, I could see the, the ten acres, you know, you have these larger opportunities, you know, maybe they need more variances, so a planned development is needed, but the majority should fall under your straight zoning.
Absolutely. Their initial request is that we get rid of, as I said earlier, PDs altogether. They said, you don't need those, if your zoning code's good enough, then everyone has to follow the rules, didn't, you know? Back me up.
Yeah.
And then they said twenty acre minimum. So we're really coming in somewhere middle of the road by saying ten.
I get that for, in the middle of the stick somewhere, where it's, big farms are re, are developing, I get that, but that, that is not this township. Where I'm struggling is, I think you want your thumb on a redevelopment where you have a second chance to right all these wrongs that you talked about, probably correctly, from development in the seventies, and maybe in the eighties. And I think ten acres is too, too big. I mean, I think five is maybe about where we should be. I think we should have the ability, as a zoning commission, to look at these, these, these infill developments or redevelopments, infill redevelopments probably more appropriate, and have the ability to, to modify as appropriate.
Five's fair, um, only, the last thing I'll say is that um, once you put it, land into a PD, it's out of your control forever. And you guys are very careful, I've read a lot of your work about what you approve as far as conditions go. But what did they approve for conditions in nineteen seventy-five? That's a lo, that was a long time ago. Land today is still sitting there, and there's no, our zoning code does not matter to them one bit.
Well, var, variances in, by the BZA are also forever.
Yeah, the variances are forever. So what do you think, uh, Ms. McMullin, five acres, ten acres, twenty acres, or no acres?
I'm fine with five acres. I just want to make sure that when it comes to the zoning commission, we're putting our conditions on it and not to take a dig at the trustees, because that's not what my intent is here. But in watching their meetings, they tend to kick things back to us and say, hey, let us add these on to any of the planned developments. So size-wise, I like having a say in things. So size-wise, I like having a say in things. So I'm gonna back Mr. Bachman and say five.
Okay. Mr. Wilson?
I like ten.
Hi.
Hi.
Let's start with Mr. Westfall.
What? Five or ten?
Five or ten acres.
Acres.
Minimum.
Five?
Five.
Where are you at?
I, I, I probably can agree with you that five acres for the township is probably the right number. Because, I mean, the properties that are ten acres or more that they may wanna develop are probably a lot slimmer. That would mean that if we put a ten on it, that would mean that they'd have to go further west to get property to do that with. And most of the population of this township is on the east side.
Just to be clear, you would basically not have a PD again unless it was a redevelopment. If you develop out that way, as you're speaking, in the undeveloped area right now, but there's no ten-acre parcel on Colrain Avenue.
Correct.
So that would be what you'd be voting for. So it, it sounds like five is across, pretty much across the board.
That's my theory. That's my reasoning.
Can we say five and bookmark that for us when it comes back?
Yeah, if you wanna think about it for the next, uh, two months, and then, yeah, but we'll put five for now. Sorry, Mr. Wilson.
That's right.
Do we have any last, do we have any final thoughts about anything? I think this has been very positive. I've been anxious to see what you guys thought. Uh, five, six, and seven are pretty point, I mean, they're very important, but they're not gonna be controversial. So they're gonna be like one and two where, so this is the exciting ones. Yeah, definitions is seven. Non-conformities is five, and six is administration.
So then let me come back to my one with you saying that.
Sure.
Where, where in our code, cuz I know right now it's not, I've had a gazillion conversations with zoning enforcement over bushes and them blocking the right-of-ways, or the entire front of a house is covered, and we have the incident that we had a few months ago, and where in our zoning code can we sneak in the maintenance of some of these bushes that are being put in and just, they're thirty feet tall, yes. Where is that going to fall? Because we need that in.
It would be difficult to regulate residential landscaping. It's very easy to regulate commercial landscaping, but as far as residential landscaping goes, what would that look like? Something like a max height, or would that look like a, we could do a vision triangle? But would that be out of, you know what that is?
Yes.
Would, would that be out of everyone's driveway, or would that be like at intersections?
So I'll give an example. I live on Menominee, near the corner of Dunraven. You turn the corner on Dunraven, you have to walk almost out into the street to get around these bushes that should be maybe three feet around, but they're thirty feet because no one maintains them.
To overgrown the sidewalk?
Oh, it, practically in the street.
We'll get with KZF and ZoneCo, and we'll look at residential vision site triangles because we have that for commercial, and if we had that for intersections of residential streets, is that what you're saying?
Not even intersections. It can up the streets or two houses up.
Long right way.
Yeah, I can either go that way, I have to go in the street, or I can go that way and I have to go in the street because the bushes were planted right by the sidewalk and nobody maintains them and-
So, it sounds like you're talking about impede, it's site impede it right away.
Physically walking impeded.
Site would be easier, like if you're driving a car and we have some sort of justification of, um, nobody would be able to see someone in an intersection. But, uh, some, you're talking about somebody's bushes growing over the right-of-way and in the path of the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Right, or if you're, we have a resident that's in a wheelchair, can't go anywhere.
Yeah, and I totally agree with you.
Bush locked.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's in there now, but-
It might be in property maintenance. I don't know. It might be a difficult position to put the trustees in where we, um, end up talking about finding residential properties, which is honestly one of the reasons residents are less, have less zoning restrictions than commercial properties cuz we don't wanna have to go after your own citizens. But on the other side, you should, the sidewalk is there for the community's enjoyment. So, um, we can look at if there are other townships that, or if the RRC allows us the ability to ensure that the site, there's some sort of sidewalk clearance or sidewalk pathway or pedestrian pathway that's required to be clear of any kind of brush.
Okay.
Did you get that?
Yep.
Yeah, we'll look into that and we'll know by the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It's a great point. And Mr. Wilson, you have anything else?
I do not. Great job on this.
Thanks. It wasn't just me. It was about ten, fifteen, twenty people. Uh, Mr. Bachman?
No.
This is a one?
No.
Mr. Good? With that, I'll turn it back over to you, Miss McMullin.
Thank you, and that was great. Uh, any announcements?
We have none.
Okay, next meeting is July the sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
That will only be a reading. There's no cases.
Okay, so just repeat.
Exactly.
Okay. Alright, so that's it. So thank you to my fellow commissioner, staff, everyone present tonight. Uh, sorry that it wasn't working. It was hard being up here with the paper in front of us. I can't imagine sitting in your seats and just listening to it, so thank you. Uh, so all in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.